If that's a very aggressive amount, how much more aggressive can we get with adding the streetlights? Like, do we just have enough for the 100, or do we now have enough for maybe 200? I mean, can I put out there 200 lights now?
Any of you who choose to take that one. I mean, there's an issue of money and there's also an issue of capacity. So, let us know.
I think if we cleared the list this year, that would be a pretty good thing, and then we can take a look at what next year looks like. That would be an aggressive year.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. I was always told that we didn't have money to put up lights because we couldn't maintain them. So, a lot of people don't even call and put their name on the list for that reason. So, now we have the money to put up lights and maintain them, because for years, even when I was NIA president, 10-plus years ago, that's what we were told.
I can't speak to the past. I can only speak to what we know today. We've had several conversations with Westar about this. Doug has done some research. We know what our financial condition is today. We don't have a line item specifically for this. As this item has been brought up as important to this body, we've gone in and we've taken a look at what we believe would be a viable funding source for it, and that's what we're bringing forward. We don't, you know, we think that in that budget, we have enough money to say, "Well, let's just do every, you know, let's do 300,000." I can't comment on that. That's not what we were looking at. We looked at, "How do you solve a $30,000 problem?" We feel comfortable with that as, but, you know, streetlights are an issue, road repair's an issue, potholes are an issue, abandoned homes are an issue. I mean, we're trying to continually bring the best information we can on how to address the myriad of problems that we have. So, I don't think I have an answer to you other than we're dealing with the known problem today, and if I think if it goes well, it may become something that a lot of people get excited about in the future, and we can do more analysis on it, as the deputy mayor had indicated at the beginning of this conversation. But we can address the list as it exists today and get Elaine her light.
Well, and I understand what the issues are. I didn't ask that, but I guess I'm just asking, so if we put up these 100 lights, I just want to make sure that we're able to maintain them, because for years, that's what I was always told. The reason, because they can't go up, is because we cannot maintain them. But they can get, like, the runway lights on Washburn, which my East Peak of South people don't want it. We spent man-hours out there saying where we wanted lights, and they came back and told us no through H and D and also through the city. And so, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to get so far out there that we can't maintain them, and I think it's kind of, I mean, I guess we're going to go by the list, and we don't know how many, on what side of town, or who's done it, because for years, I've told people that we couldn't put them up because we couldn't maintain them. So, it's kind of a bittersweet for me. Not that I don't want them, not that I don't know that it's an issue. I just want to make sure that we don't get into not being able to afford them. That's my issue.
I think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think the deputy mayor and I are sort of tag-teaming on this, that we want to offer an immediate solution, and it is $30,000 per year. It's not a one-time $30,000 shot. We continue to pay Westar for the rental and the maintenance of these lights as we go forward. But at the same time, I think it gives us an opportunity, especially if we have some success in that, to come back with a more well-thought-out program going forward.
So, it might be a suggestion from the city manager then to wrap this up. Any other comments? Move on to the next one, which was a grant writer, with some discussion about having a grants person. We've heard some feedback from staff about whether that's needed. Councilwoman Schwartz, you want to lead that on?
Thank you, your honor. I wrote a kind of a summary on the idea of a grant writer, and maybe this might be a solution to some of the issues, that we can find money that would help with preventing crime by putting streetlights up. You know, I know the Department of Justice has grants. There's so many federal grants out there that we have not even, you know, sought after to look at. So, with that in mind, I'm passing out this that kind of describes what the position would do. High-level professional work-related grant-seeking grant administration and coordinating grant management activities on a citywide basis. And you can read there what the average salary was, and I went through then, and I didn't want to find cities, large cities. I wanted to find cities that were smaller, more like, you know, the population that we might be that you don't see on the map other than being a capital city. Boynton Beach has had a grant writer for 15 years. They've brought in 195 grants at 30.54 million. The next city that I chose was Somerville. They have a grant writer, and they find and apply for federal, state, corporate, and private grants. It provides new funding or boosts existing funding for a broad range of city projects and initiatives. Hattiesburg has a grant coordinator who works closely with the city departments to help them find resources necessary to develop and complete programs and projects to increase the quality of life in the city. Gaudy Air, I've never even heard of that town. Patty researches and secures corporate government foundation funding for annual operating expenses, project support, and special event sponsorships. So, I thought that was pretty good. And this one, I don't even know how to pronounce it. Alum Gorda has, they have a grant coordinator who monitors other grant funds for the city and assists with applications for potential funding. And then Lincoln has one who performs a wide variety of research coordination development activities for finding proposals, and Nat Chodousis. They identify 1.5 million annually brought in by their grant coordinator. So, this is why I think that we, you know, it's time. I think we've asked for it many years, that we have somebody that actually writes grants, goes after grants, and coordinates the grants amongst all the city departments. And it would require a bachelor's degree and then two to four years of responsible related experience. This example is from Peoria, Illinois, and Peoria, Illinois has a population of 115,000. So, I went along with the idea that we, I'm not saying rob from Peter to pay Paul. I think we have money that the city manager can, you know, move into this for at least the first year, and then hopefully, that first year, this grant position would pay for itself. And that's part of, with the state, which I have been, you know, had worked with the state government a lot, a lot of those positions were funded by grants, and we would continue to look for grants that would fund the grant coordinator. So, that's my idea. It's an amendment to the budget that I would hope the city would include. I don't, you know, I wasn't sure how we were considering amendments, so that's just my two cents.
Well, we'll discuss this a little bit now, and then people can decide whether they want to make a motion when it's time to make the motions. We've had this suggestion in more than one meeting for a more than one councilperson, and we had some feedback, so the city managers had time to consider that as well. Would you like to respond in terms of whether your thoughts have changed or what you think we should do on this?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Schwartz. So, this is an important position. We have approximately, four months ago, when we hired Kelly Baker, half of her responsibility was to take on the grant responsibilities. We sent her to initial training. She's been spending the last several months working within the departments themselves to understand how they process grants and what role that we could play to support that. In addition to that, we've analyzed other cities within the state, and there are no other cities in the state that have a full-time grant writer. I know that there are that have them, and I've been in positions where they've had that. We had a full-time grant writer. I don't know that we can actually point back to the work product and what was lost, you know, when that particular person left, but that doesn't mean the position works or doesn't work. Our position has been, and I think it remains, that we want to continue to build the program internally with the resources that we have. We think that we can do it, but if we, if this body, it was important to give it a shot in a different way, we're certainly supportive of that, and we will put that person to work. And I would guess that at the end of it, they're probably not spending 100% of their time on grant writing. They might be spending, you know, some of their time on other activities, but we don't know what they are. There is no lack of things to do. I think our objective has been to be very responsive to the community and to constituent responses and responsive to this body also. So, we don't believe that we need the position today. We may come back with a totally different story next year, and you'll say, "Well, I gave you your chance," and that's too bad. But, you know, we're continuing to work it very hard. So, I'm not as funny as I think I am.
Thank you. There were some hands, or, yes?
I would support a grant writer. We did have one full-time. Our NIA members, different members are asking for it. And again, there's money out there. We just need to tap on it, and we need somebody full-time that would be able to do that, help our NIAs with the fundings that they need to make things possible. So, I would support it. I would hope you would make that amendment, and I would be happy to support it. I think it could only be beneficial, and I think it's long and overdue. At that particular time, you know, we were going through the bone bears, and we were cutting out a lot of positions, and I think we're all past that, whether it's finding money for the arts, whether it's finding money for our youth, whether it's finding money for our NIAs. It can only be beneficial to us. So, I would support it, and I thank you for bringing that to the table.
Councilwoman Short?
Just to clarify, my understanding, Councilwoman Schwartz, is this grant writer would be primarily for city grants and not necessarily for NIAs, the way you've proposed it. Is that correct?
The grant writers that I've researched that work for other cities help neighborhood, community, grant writing, they get grants for many different various things. The money comes straight to the city, though. A couple of the research cities that I did, they made it very clear on their website that they don't write a grant for a neighborhood improvement association, but they go after funding to help prove neighborhoods. So, yes, I think that it would be directly to neighborhoods, but there's a lot of different grants out there that EPA, that justices, we're not even tapping in on it.
And I would be supportive of a position that was city-first, but in that extra time where they weren't spending time on the city grants, that they were working with the NIAs, helping perhaps one representative from the NIAs to proofread and edit grants that the NIAs are presenting, so that more money can flow directly to the NIAs on a, you know, secondary basis, because their first primary responsibility would be to the city. But as they had time, I would like to make that resource available to the NIAs, if that's possible. That's what I would support, and that's such a position.
Councilwoman Billie's last.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Just a caution, word of caution. As a grant writer, one grant could consume several hours, especially when we're talking about different grants that are being, and the grants that we would be applying for as an organization would be for foundations and would be also for federal grants. Those grants are huge, and for us to be in the position right now, I love the talk about a grant writer for the city, because I think that, yes, having somebody in our offices that is, has an expertise in grants is wonderful, but saying that we would have that same person meet the demands and meet with the NIAs on a regular basis to evaluate those grants is a very slippery slope, in the sense that the time that it would consume and the amount of, the potential of the amount of grants that we would have, that would be a whole different conversation of a whole different position, maybe. But I think that setting out an expectation for somebody to take care of those two roles would be setting the city up for failure, because we would be over-promising something that more than likely would not be able to be fulfilled. It's a big job.
Councilman Johnson and, oh, Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify that this position would be in finance. It would not be in the city manager's office, and that was the way it was that I looked at the other cities, that it was in the finance department, not under the city manager. So, I know his comment about Kelly is an assistant to, in the city manager's office. So, this would be a full-time position that would be in finance.
Councilwoman Johnson?
If you want to respond.
I'm sorry?
I just have to, I think that, from an operational perspective, we would make a determination as to where that position fits within the organization. It's an operational issue in the city, though. We have, we do a lot of grant work right now, and we do have somebody who coordinates all of the grants coming from the city, and they are in finance right now. What we've been looking at is what is the best program that we could implement to support the city? I mean, I don't want to give the impression to anybody that we're not getting a lot of grants. The city receives a lot of grant money, and what we're looking at is how can we enhance that program as it exists? So, we're supportive of this. We're not trying to be anything. We have been looking at this issue for about six months, and I think we've made some progress on there, but maybe we haven't communicated effectively. In fact, we haven't communicated effectively everything that we've determined, because we haven't finished the analysis yet.
And that was essentially going to be my comments. I'm supportive of giving Kelly a shot. I think she's a sharp gal, and with the proper training, I think perhaps she could take on a lot of these responsibilities and maybe eventually become, you know, the full-time grant writer that you're advocating for. I think we need, as you said, Mr. Coulson, some more information on the number of grants the city is currently receiving and who all is helping work on those and what our current volume is. Without a full-time grant writer, it could appear that we're not doing anything at all because we don't have anybody that's coordinating them as the focal point. But indeed, maybe we're already at most of the capacity that we could be for receiving grants, and a full-time person isn't necessary. I don't, I appreciate your comments, but until we have the information to show that, I don't think we're in a position to make this decision yet.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Chair. We are not at full-time capacity for getting the grants that are out there to be received. And I was a grant writer, too. Went after half a million-dollar grants at the state, and they're there. You just have to go after them, and you have to have somebody that's coordinated to do that. And I think that Kelly, bless her heart, has some experience, but she's not a full-time grant writer. She does not, and you can train people to try to go. But when you're in grant writing, you have to know the sites to go to, to where they're at. You have to track. It's a profession. Thank you.
And I don't want to talk about individuals here and what their role is. I mean, she's been tasked to do some research, so I think it's unfair to talk about whether she is or isn't qualified. No, I had assigned her a task, so.
I would ask, if you have information showing what our current capacity is, I would love to see that, because I haven't, so I don't know. You know, indicate we're not near capacity in terms of the grants we could receive. I would like to see that information, if you would share it at some time in the future.
I don't have that information, but I could request the city staff to look at what its cities are size are getting in grant funding and see if we compare to that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sounds good. I'm guessing that from the salary range that you have in here, that you'd be talking about a $90,000 addition to the budget, because you have to add fringe benefits, and there are other costs to support any employee. So, something to keep in mind.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had 32,000 to 60,000 is the average United States. The one that I gave the example was 57,000 in Peoria, Illinois. So, you know, and as I said, I'm not coming up with a figure, and I just, I feel like it needs to be decided by the city manager where this money would come from. I would just like to see it as an amendment to the budget. We are going to add a grant writer to our budget, and I've asked for this two years now. This will be the third year.
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if you want to suggest an addition, you're going to need to have a number. And when you take a $60,000 budget and then, or salary, and you add 20% benefits to it, you're at 72, and then you've got, you've got a lot of other expenses. So, it's something to keep in mind. So, what I'm hearing is some people who would like to do that, others who feel like we could, we have obviously a halftime FTE available that could develop that. So, see what you think when we get to amendment time. Next item, if we may? Are we all right? All right. There had been some discussion about whether there seemed to be solid support for more money at the Department of Neighborhood Relations for demolitions. Correct me if I'm wrong, of course, but there had been some debate about the need for two additional FTEs. So, is there any further discussion about that that anyone wants to have?
Councilwoman Ortiz?
I won't support it. I think we should just use what we have, but I won't support it.
Okay.
Councilwoman clear?
You know, at some point, I sit back and I have to realize that people have jobs to do, and they do their jobs, and I have to trust that they do their jobs, and they know what needs to be done in that position, and not to try and outguess them on you don't need this or you do. With that said, I will support it, however, their feet's to the fire, because then I expect more results, because it can be taken away just as easily as it's given. So, I just have to trust that it's their job. They know what they're doing. I don't do that job. So, I will be supporting it.
Other conversation on that one? Council training, that had come up in a prior session. We've checked with the city manager and with staff. Nikki, do you have a suggestion for us?
Deputy Mayor, are you speaking of a dollar amount?
Yes.
I looked into the history of that, and I would rather that be part of the motion of the council, but what I did find is, back in 2010, which is the highest, most recent year I could find, it was at 11,000, and then kind of progressively since then, it's gone down every year to the point of now being about 1,500. So, you know, I could tell you the highest and the lowest as far as a dollar amount. I think that's really kind of up to your discretion.
And it was actually that one where the conversation about you being able to find alternate money began to emerge from our preparation for today. So, there was discussion, if somebody wants to propose it, that it could easily cost $2,000 to send anybody anywhere. Can be less than that if it's like a League of Kansas municipalities meeting right here in Topeka or in Overland Park or something like that. A figure of 15,000 might be in the ballpark for those expanded costs if somebody wants to propose it. Any more discussion on that?
So, we have, there's funding available if we want to go for training now from other sources. Is that correct? Is that what I'm understanding, or is it just not?
Generally speaking, we have taken that money out of the city manager budget and made it available when people ask to participate in things.
Okay.
You know, I think that having a number of 1,500, $2,000 per individual is a very good idea. So, you know, maybe the number's $18,000 or $20,000. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Have a permanent fund so that you can plan accordingly.
Planning, like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz?
I won't support it. We have a bare-bones budget. I think we need to set the standard, and I think if we want to travel, we need to do it on our own. That's kind of why it went from a large amount to a small amount, so I won't support any amount. Thank you.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Thank you. Since we have a JETO, which includes the entire council and, except for the voting members, and the county commission, is that something that could be arranged in that $5 million contract to pay for travel, to whether we do the benchmarking, the inner-city benchmarking trips, or training that would be for a government? I don't know. I'm just questioning that.
I think the answer would be yes, though we got caught short on that before by not having it in our own budget, if it was something that was important to us, happened before. Do you want to respond any further, city manager?
Deputy Mayor, if I could add?
Okay.
It is currently in the JETO budget to pay for the travel for the inner-city trips for all of the members of the city council and the county commission. I mean, it's actually, it's the go-to-peak-a-budget, because JETO doesn't have a budget like that.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question, perhaps. You were just talking about inner-city trips?
No.
I didn't.
No, but I was just pointing out for the inner-city trips, it's taken care of in that manner.
But if we didn't, if it's sent there for all elected officials and we don't use it, where's it go?
It stays there, and in fact, I think it comes out of donated dollars, those trips do.
Councilwoman.
The only concern that I would have, great idea, the only concern that I would have is that those dollars are earmarked for economic development. Therefore, the training would only have the purpose of economic development training, and it would leave out the ability for council to receive training on other policy issues or other educational opportunities that may be available. Great idea, just understanding that since those dollars are earmarked specifically for economic development, the training would have to be just that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Short?
This is something that I would hesitate to put in the budget as well. I'd prefer to see this funded, perhaps by that grant writer that Elaine's talking, Councilwoman Schwartz is talking about. They could go out and find out if there are grants for us to do it, so that it's not on our taxpayer dollars. That's how I'd prefer to see our travel expenses for those type of trainings to be provided for, if possible. Thank you.
Something to share with everyone, having been part of the very end of that, is that we do have some, it's either an ordinance or a council rule somewhere, that if a city council member ever goes to training on the, with city dollars, they have a responsibility to bring back a report to the council and share with the council what they learned. And so, that has built in a certain sense of responsibility, and that training money is an investment in not only that councilperson's performance, but the city should be getting something for it. It provided a pretty good check and balance when it was there to have a good reason to go and a good subject matter, just for the record.
I would throw in, I think it's our responsibility to continue learning in this role. You know, we sit at the very top of a very large organization with a lot of moving parts, and many of us don't have a ton of skills in running municipalities, so for us to continue learning is very important. And it, you know, yes, we as individuals learn from this, but with some of the reporting requirement, with working collectively as a team, that knowledge doesn't just leave with you if you don't stay on council. It becomes part of the collective knowledge of this body that gets passed from councilperson to councilperson, and it's very important for us to continue bringing knowledge into our group and learning to do something better. The other aspect is, it's always a good idea to go outside your community and take a look at not only your community from the outside, but to look at other communities that have similar issues and problems, and some that have completely different issues and problems, and to learn from that and bring that knowledge back and try to build a better community. And I think that we have a duty to go out and do what we can to learn and improve and help make the community better.
All right. More discussion on that? We'll have a chance to, if someone wants to propose it shortly, we can. The last item I had on carry forward was, there was some discussion along the way that there will be a recommendation coming forward next week from the ECD committee that $8,215 would remain unallocated in the contracted services part of the social services money, and there was a suggestion that we allocate $8,215 to Keep America Beautiful with the intent of having them move forward with a beautification/vegetation removal initiative in 2016. Don't know if people had further thoughts about that. Councilwoman.
How does this differ from the monies that we already give them, that they get in the social services?
It would add to that. It would fully fund their budget request and would provide about 3,200 extra as base money. What they do is write a lot of grants, a lot of small grants for all the various cleanup initiatives, and they organize volunteers, so that would give them a stake toward a major cleanup campaign for summer of 2016. major cleanup campaign for summer of 2016.
Then couldn't other social services also ask that, to add something in the budget to? I don't understand.
They didn't request it. It came out of a discussion here about, related to the initiatives with doing more demolitions and doing more code compliance work with neighborhood resources.
And, and so that would be to do what, for them to do what, exactly?
To do a major community-wide cleanup initiative. We had a speaker who suggested either going neighborhood by neighborhood or doing something broader.
And so what, that money covers what neighborhood's doing exactly what?
That would have to be negotiated with them to see how far they could run with it, and by making that commitment now, they would be able to write grants and add to that and prepare for summer.
So we don't really know, like, I don't know if that would benefit my neighborhood.
Do not, not at this point. Not that it wouldn't, but it's not, it's not a developed proposal.
Okay.
Councilwoman.
I hesitate to support that, having voted on the ECD Committee to return the money to the general fund. That's what my vote was intended to do, and I appreciate the work that Keep America Beautiful does, but I don't want to send the message to the other people that we're playing favorites or that if they've got enough pull, they can come back and find funding, because we made some hard choices, and we told several people, we can't. And to take one organization, no matter what good work they do, and the other members can vouch for this, we cut money from some very, very deserving organizations. So it's not a mount whether Keep America Beautiful is deserving. It's a question of the fairness to other organizations and whether we set a precedent that money returned can then be pulled to fund somebody that applied for it originally. So I would not be able to support that.
Any other discussion on that? Okay. We, that, those are the ones that I had listed to bring forward. Are there any that I overlooked, or any other ones that people would want to discuss before we go to our voting item? And I think, looking at the clock, there's probably going to be a tape issue, so we'll plan to take a short break and then come back and do our voting. Councilwoman.
Thank you. I have one other issue that I wanted to bring up. And I did a little bit of research on this to also determine whether there were cities that did this type of thing. And I did find that first sentence of this, "The city council has the final hiring authority for all officers and employees, even though the mayor and council have delegated the initial hiring authority to the city manager." That I did find. So I think the basis for this, and I'll cover the basis first, is that we don't want to micromanage, micromanage the city manager. That is definitely not the intent here. But I think that in the past year, there's been many changes in, with the neighborhood relations, in the city manager's office, and that type of thing. So my proposal is basically that we, in order for the council to better understand and manage the organizational structure of the city of Topeka, the city manager shall review with the governing body all top managerial positions newly created or those to be filed, filled from a resignation or termination. These positions include department heads and non-union managerial positions who report directly to a department head. I have no idea how, what the number of that is, and probably Doug can, can answer that question quickly, as to how many department heads, and then how many people that answer directly to the department head and supervise others. And that, those are the positions that I'm talking about. So that would be my first question, is how, how many people? What this would ensure is that these positions are necessary and critical to this successful operation of the city. So having an informed and involved governing body will enhance the perception of residents that our city government is not only in the hands of the city manager, but also in the hands of their elected leaders. So my question is, how many would this affect? How many positions?
Mr. Gerber.
Councilwoman, I, I certainly wouldn't have that number off the top of my head, but if you give me a bit of time, we can look at it.
We might need to define a little bit where you draw the line in terms of what you're envisioning.
Well, those that would answer and have management responsibility, in other words, are managing others, so.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I have serious concern with regards to this proviso solely because of the fact that it creates a very difficult blurred line for an employee if there is an additional level of responsibility coming to the policy body on the hiring process, and...
This would be done before the hiring process. This is to fill the vacancy or add a, create a new position. So it's not, it's the employee that would be hired is not, this isn't contingent upon the, the council approving that employee. This is, this is a process where the city manager would come to the council wanting to fill a position that's either a department head or somebody that reports directly to a department head.
So this is similar, perhaps, to what happens at the staff level, to approve a position being filled before it's filled, is that?
They have a committee that, that reviews the position, and, because I had, I had done a little research with the city manager on this, and they have a committee that does meet, composed of the department heads, to look at the positions that come, and they've got very good, excellent documents that, that are submitted for that discussion. I'm taking it to the next level, that at least in the top managerial positions, that there would be a review of the position before it is filled.
Not the personnel issue, just the position?
Right, just the position, yes.
Councilwoman, do you, did you want to react further? Deputy Mayor. Mayor.
If, if I may interject, I, I have a, a concern about this as violating the charter ordinance, which is very clear that this body is only policy, and that the city manager has full authority to hire and fire. And that's in our charter. We would have to amend the charter ordinance.
Well, Mary, could we, if it's only to do with policy, is there something that we could do that's part of the policy process that, you know, we would look at the? I'm just trying to get at the fact that we make so many changes, and as many on this council have said, where is the org chart? How do we, where do we know where people are? How, how is this happening? And I just, and I want this to work. I mean, I want the city manager to work and, and all of this process work, but when we fill vacancies and we make so many changes without the council knowing, knowing what's going on, I have been out in public and been asked about where this position is, and it's embarrassing, because I am a city leader and I don't know.
Well, that may be a...
So if it has to do with policy and not hiring and firing, then let's make it, you know, pertaining to policy.
Well, that may be more of a communication issue than, from the city manager. And, but this would definitely be inconsistent with the charter ordinance.
Okay.
Mary, if I can ask you across the table, though, as, as she was reading this, there is something in either the charter, and, and Mayor, you've been through this recently, too, in either the charter or the council rules that talks about the city manager running organization charts passed the council on some sort of a periodic basis. Is there not?
I think that was in the, the charter ordinance when it was initially passed. The charter ordinance required the, the city manager to come up with some kind of a, or not an organization chart, but some kind of authority. He would bring forward the plan, which was then approved by the council.
Something like that.
But that was back in 2005, and that, that all was accomplished, but it's not an ongoing type of thing. It was a one-time deal, as, as I interpreted it.
Okay. I was thinking it was still in there.
I don't, I'm not aware of it.
Well, and I, I mentioned that both just to understand what, what Councilwoman Schwartz is saying, but also, at least the mayor and I have, have a commitment, you know, we've got some, we've got to review the charter and the council rules because of the change in, in the mayor's roles that was voted on in, in April, and now we need to look at it as well because of the change in election cycles to make sure we reconcile all those things. So I'm not saying you, you couldn't propose a proviso, but we, we may be looking at those rules anyway to see if that old rule from 2005 is there, or if that would be a place to, to look at.
That's why I brought it up.
Explore something like this.
Thank you.
Sure. Any, Councilman?
New subject.
Okay. New subject? Are they, are they ready?
It's been two hours.
Well, it's, it's, it's a little after nine, so usually this would be about when. Let's go ahead and break. That way, you'll be first up, and we'll finish whatever anybody has, and we will go, go move forward. Ten minutes? Is that what you?
As soon as she started talking about that. It is in the charter ordinance.
I think it was just a one-time.[1766.22]